I call the Finance Committee to meet an order for Monday, April 8th, 2019. First item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 5419. That's a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Stormwater Fund 605, the amount of $26,000. This is coming to water pollution. Mr. Woodger.
Basically, whenever the county auditor collects taxes for us, they get a certain amount that they keep for their services. We've got a little, took in a little more than than normal, and therefore we have to reallocate $26,000. We won't get the money. They keep it, but we have to make it legal for them to keep it.
All right.
Is that pretty close?
That's pretty close.
Close enough.
I didn't see you there. I was looking for you.
That's all right.
Who's your second on this?
Oh.
Bowles, McDaniels?
I got it. Wait a minute. McDaniels.
All right. Any questions for Jerry or Denise on this? This is the next question. How many, how many readings?
Two, I believe, right?
It's really up to Tricia. She has balance books.
Because I've already made the expense, so I've thrown her account into the red so that it gets.
So why don't we go with suspension and since we've got to pay a bill, I mean, basically we're not paying. We're letting it keep it.
We've already lost Randy's mom, all right? We don't want to lose Randy.
Just heard Jerry say it.
Well, it sounds like.
I saw you, Jerry, reading over there.
It sounds like that's, I mean.
Tricia usually likes to come and balance by the end of the month.
Yeah, as long as it's passed by the end. Choose one.
Okay, we'll go two then.
Geez, I already wrote one down.
I could have lived with that because it, basically, we're not gaining or giving up.
All right. We'll go two readings on 5419. Next item I have is 5519. That's a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the 320 capital improvement fund in the amount of $100,000. This is, oh, this is Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, talk to us.
Well, you know, we kind of got a preliminary news by our city council, but I wanted to wait till tonight until we had a site approval. AEP did come to our site. It's going to be a location behind the municipal port. You know where the drive-through is the county owns right across from the Old Eagle Gazette. There's going to be a parking space. There's a telephone pole, but AEP came out there and said they can approve it. We're looking at, you know, 440 volts, a lot of electric ass. So this is a DC fast charger. It actually will have two, two charging points on it, but only one car can charge at a time. We are still hopeful trying to see if we can get a grant to fund a slow charging station, which would be on what we call a level two. This is a level three. Level one is what you put in your home if you're getting a charge, a car that you're going to charge overnight in your garage. So I'm really grateful. This is probably our first successful grant by our grant writer. Linda and I worked on this, and she did a good job, and we got a reply, like, very fast. They are looking for people to do this. What really qualified us is the fact that with our proximity close to downtown, the location was very appealing to them. So this is money in and money out. So we, we got granted for the whole amount, but it really is going to be whatever we use. I got to send that justification back in, and we're going to be reimbursed of whatever we use. So I, I'm going to say we're probably going to at least use, most likely, up to $80,000 or more. It just depends on what we run into. But we have 90 days to do this. We have to resubmit back at the end of 90 days. We are on task. We have a contractor that's starting to do the work for the electric AEP as soon as they upgrade the pole because they're going to put a new transformer, a new pole in, and then we are ready to order the charger itself. They're almost 30 days out to get the charger in, from what I'm understanding. I would love to see if you could pass this tonight, but if you feel more comfortable in second reading, that would be okay. But I would prefer it tonight because then I would start working our purchase orders. We do have a then and now in the resolutions, so I'm proceeding forward.
Well, this is good. So it sounds like you have a very short window to get this done.
Yes.
What we're doing is we're basically taking them, we're appropriating in the 320 capital improvement, and we'll pay that back with whatever the reimbursement grant from AEP is, and that'll make that account whole. So any questions for Paul on this one? Yes, Mr. Bowles?
What vehicles are being, will be charged there?
Well, I think it's for the public.
It says "commercial" of some kind, right?
Well, that's the actual grant that it was, it was for, so we are a commercial entity that's qualified for this. But these are going to be residential cars pulling up. That is, you know, the, the most famous one is a Tesla.
Tesla.
But they're going to be vehicles like that that can get charged within 30 minutes to an hour and maybe have, it, it takes more than 30 minutes, but they could do like 200 miles in a, in a half an hour. We're hopeful that we can get a slow charge or a slower charge, level two, as well. They ran out of money, but if they reappropriate some more here in a month or two, we're ready to go. That location would be in our city parking lot beside Job and Family Services. That's our location. That would probably be two parking spaces, but you could leave it in charge. But fast chargers, incredible amount of electricity. I'll just tell you a couple of details you're probably interested in. It has the capability, it's online, it's on the web, so somebody's, it'll go all across the country, and you can say, oh, here's a DC fast charger in Lancaster. Nobody's charging, and you hit, and it'll take you right to the location. You plug it in, and we'll be reimbursed for the electricity that we are going to be using there, so we'll have a method of payment that they would use for that. But we actually would be billed for that electricity. And Treasurer Goldfinger and I, we have worked out the details as we track that money coming in for that reimbursement. The, the deal that we have takes us up to four years. There will be a cost of having that communicate to the web and all those things after four years, but what we're looking at right now gives us four years of warranty with this product.
I think the question might have more been, can any, is it a universal, universally adaptable to any?
So they have two different styles of plugins, and so a lot of people for the fast chargers, sometimes they'll take some adapters with them. I think that's extra charge when you, if you purchase that vehicle. And they're, they're actually listed in the paperwork I have, but they don't make sense to me. But yes, there's going to be, but you can only charge one car at a time, so if one of those two fit, you're good. Typically, they are the top two that is used for DC fast charging across the country.
John, did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Holly?
Just out of curiosity, from an operations standpoint, somebody comes in, charges their car. I'm assuming there's a time limit, so there, who's going to be monitoring to make sure that that car actually does get moved when it's done charging to open up the charging station?
I don't know if there's a time limit on that. I mean, you know, I, I really can't answer that question. I know when a fast charger, they're usually there to get in and out. They love the fact that it's close to downtown. A slow charge, like what we'd have over JFS, would probably be all afternoon, possibly. But most of these cars are charged at night, you know, they could be traveling through. But I, I don't know about that. I know that when they're plugged in, they're using electricity, they're paying for it. That's an important thing to me. So I don't know what to say on.
Might be something that you want to check into.
Yeah, I don't, I think our question's more about a car not sitting there.
All day.
All day, connected to the charger when it took them 30 minutes.
Well, I know this, that we're going to have a, a classic EV spot for that parking spot. You have to be an EV vehicle, and you have to be plugged in, and that it gives us authority to write a parking ticket if you're there when you shouldn't be. But I really can't, I don't know enough information to say, how long would it take for that vehicle to charge up?
That's not what she's asking.
I know.
What she's asking is, is, is there an enforcement mechanism to ensure that someone just doesn't park there all day, even when it takes their, their.
Vehicle 30 minutes.
Vehicle 45 minutes to charge, you know, and, and number one, they're holding the charger that someone else can't use.
Yes, right.
So I, I guess you might want to think about.
One-hour limit.
Yeah, whatever your rules are going to be for that, those particular spots.
Wouldn't it be good if the app told you that your car is charged, get it offline?
I believe it will.
That would be helpful.
I would.
I will ask about it. We have not had discussion on that.
Yeah, I, I think you have an enforcement thing that, that, and kind of the same thought that I kind of had was, it's great, but you can't park there all day. You can park there to charge your car.
Make it a one-hour limit. Doesn't mean you can catch everybody that's there.
True.
For two, three hours, but try and get them to cooperate anyway. You can't 100% enforce anything like that.
Maybe they'll send me an alert and say, go get a parking person. You know, the technology could be there.
Just something to check into and, and ask.
Yep, I sure will.
From an operations standpoint, once you have it installed.
Yeah, you bet you have the same person parking there all the time. Someone will notice that, and it will become your problem before, even if you don't plan one. So Holly, will you second this?
Yep.
Or we'll go ahead and ask for suspension since you're on a short time line.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this?
Well, Tom, I would think very possibly down the road, once Paul researches it, you could put a time limit on it as far as the aspect, same way as we've got the guy that walks around, chocks the tires and everything. It could be checked as far as how long they were there, and you know, if, if it normally takes an hour to charge, then give them an hour time limit or two hours or whatever it is, but.
It will be on the route of what that chalker does, but yeah.
So, you know, I think there's a way we can, it's a, can be a parking ticket to wear, anything else. We would just have to put signage up for it and everything and say.
Sure. Yep, perfect. I agree. All right, so we'll go one reading suspension on 5519. Thank you. That's, that's good news. Next item I have is the, the two walk-ins, which is 5619. 5619 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to facilitate development of the Magna Seating of America project in the Rock Mill Industrial Park. Of course, nice, broad, sweeping piece of legislation like this. So I had a discussion with Randall on my way down here, since he dropped this on me at 4:45. Randall, if you would, please kind of tell us why we need this and, and what prompted you to kind of put this together quickly?
Yeah, it's actually stemmed out of, and the reason I'm bringing it in is Mike Pettit and I had a telephone conference today, our first actually, with SunCap, who's going to be the developer for Magna with regard to this industrial site. And we were in discussion with them, and as part of this, what came up was the notion that, is there kind of a new entity in this whole thing or whatever, that there may be other agreements that we need to do, not necessarily changing any of the terms or conditions, you know, that's kind of set in stone as to what we've all, what we've agreed to. But, you know, we might need to enter into like development agreement could be one thing, and, and possibly some other agreements. And so I apologize for me leaving it vague, but as I, you know, was preparing it, I think there may be more than one. I just didn't know what all there would be, but I'm assured that this is just going to be agreements that memorialize what we've already kind of agreed to with regard to this project. It's just, you know, we have another new entity that's involved in the process, and Tom, as you and I discussed, it, you know, it may even involve even from the state side or whatever, some agreements we have to enter into that their, you know, their agreements were with, with Magna, and now, you know, there's this, developers involved in it as well.
So, so basically, we're not negotiating anything new. We're just basically creating, you know, the conduit so as a new player jumps in for whatever role that they're playing in this process. I think he told me, what, 69 different funding arms from, from like the state side of this or something? Something goofy like that, I think you mentioned, or 39 or something like, I can't remember.
Yeah, in, in essence, what we would be, these agreements would be memorializing what we've already agreed to.
Right.
Maybe with, you know, with all the different entities or whatever that get involved in this project as we, as it gets built out.
Yeah, so this gives them the authority to basically execute those documents and make those agreements in alignment with what was agreed to, so.
Yes.
Any questions on that? I mean, it's kind of vague. I'm going, wait a minute, you know, my head was exploding, and I thought, well, I better get a little more clarity on that. So any thoughts on this or any questions? I mean, it's just basically allowing them to do what they, we said we'd do and what they said they would do, but allow them to facilitate those, those agreements.
Thought your head looked a little bigger tonight.
Well, thank you for noticing. All right, so we're going to go two readings on this, and Don, will you second this?
Yes.
So we'll go two readings on this, and we'll get this passed next time. The next item I have is 5719, and that's a resolution to request and accept a loan from the Lancaster Port Authority to facilitate development of the Magna Seating of America project in the Rock Mill Industrial Park in the furtherance of economic development. So Law Director, I'll defer to you, then I'll start asking you questions on that since we didn't get completely through this one, so.
Yeah, again, this is one that kind of came up today. Mike Pettit and Tricia and I were discussing, and I think Bob had been involved in conversations with Mike about it earlier, with regard to taking a loan from the Port Authority to initially fund aspects, my understanding Mitch is here, but I think we're maybe at the end of this week, ready to go out for bid on the Anchor Avenue roadwork. Do I have that correct? And so just having this money available to use for, for moving this project along until we get the sale proceeds of acreage out in Rock Mill Park, that'll be coming to the city from project charge.
So basically, this is kind of the stopgap funding mechanism until we get property receipts in, which we will then use to pay back the Lancaster Port Authority in this amount of money.
Yes.
So it's not new money, it's not, it's not, it's not new debt or anything like that. We're basically using a funding source today that we will repay as soon as we sell this property on another economic development opportunity that is close to closing as well. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. So I know we need to get out to bid. I think Mitch, you indicated that we are quickly getting into that mode. We're asking for suspension. Is there any issue with suspension around the table on this particular piece so we can get moving on this project? We all know the timeliness of it. And Holly, would you second that, please?
Yes.
Okay, so very good. Appreciate the clarity. Randall, I know you dropped these late, but I know we want to keep these opportunities moving forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, are there any departmental updates this evening? Seeing none, I will now defer to President Woo for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There are a couple of things tonight. First temporary Resolution 5319, a resolution of consent for preliminary legislation for the Edie Road Project coming through Public Works. Mr. Schoonover.
Yeah, I'm going to have Mitch come up. This is, this is a pretty simple, hey, we're doing a project together.
Good evening, everyone. So, so this is very similar to any other ODOT project that we participate in with like our SDP funding type systems, that we do a preliminary legislation, kind of just making the legislative authority aware that we're doing this project. I, I do want to mention something in terms of the funding parts of this. I know we've had in the past few months, we had some discussion on this, and Council, I appreciate, you know, I think you guys funded 110,000 through the 320, and Denise has 125 through Stormwater, and I had around 50,000 in my budget that we allocated towards this to get the design off the ground. There's two phases left in this, which would be the acquisition of property and then the actual match for the construction dollars. And those are the ones that are unfunded at this time, and I know that there was some round discussion about three mil levy funds, and so I will be back in front of you at the time when those parts start to come into play. But we have stage one plans up at ODOT is, which are basically some line grade and typical type construction drawings, as well as preliminary right-of-way take information. So as those get further along in the, in the process, we'll be going for the acquisition of right-of-way and then into construction phase. So those two other pieces will be, need to be funded, so we'll be discussing that more as that comes along.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Schoonover? What's your timing on this one?
We're good with three readings.
Three readings and your second?
Whoever my odd person is. I think it may be Miss Bobbitt. Not in that way. You know what I'm going with that? Mrs. Bobbitt, please.
We will make it Miss Bobbitt and go three readings on temporary Resolution 53-19. We also have one ordinance tonight, temporary ordinance 6-19 to authorize the Service Safety Director to accept approximately 10 acres of property from Fairfield Homes for Parks Department use. This coming through law. Mr. Groff?
Yes, I believe this is out in the area of Roxton Ravine, and perhaps Randall has something to say on this.
Yeah. Thank you, President Woo. Yeah, this is, so this is property that Fairfield Homes owned. If you recall, when they developed, Denise is here. I'm going to let Denise take this over because she knows, knows it way better than I do.
This is the property between Shasta Drive and Roxton Ravine along what's called Lateral B. It sits behind the Park Lane Apartments. When Fairfield Homes developed the, the Park Lane Apartments, they were required to meet our public sites and open space requirements, and one of, one of the ways, or the way they did it was to offer this piece of property to us. We wanted it for a stream restoration project. This is the project that we have applied to FEMA for a hazard mitigation grant, and FEMA has, and Ohio Emergency Management has indicated we'll get funds through one of their programs. So we've been going back and forth with some legal, legal description type things beyond my grasp between the Law Director's office and the county on how they wanted things written. So we have finally gotten all of those things worked out and need to close on the property. We want to close on the property before we enter into the grant, because if we wait until we get the grant, then we have to go through federal uniform relocation, and that's a whole nother ball of wax that we don't want to have to deal with.
Okay, any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger.
Okay, this is stream restoration. How does this coordinate with Parks Department? And I'm not, are they going to use this for something, or why is Parks Department part of this?
Part of it is, is that it, it intends to tie into a long-term walking path, community access, to get people to and from the bike path. There's, there's a long-term plan to kind of extend a, a path that we're going to put along this. It is also, part of the project is we'll be replacing the culvert on Shasta to deal with some flooding issues there and protecting the sanitary sewer. So it's a whole mixed bag of projects. It's just Parks Department is, is the name that's, that's on the legislation.
Kind of seems like a odd way to do it. I don't see Parks Department gaining much advantage out of this, so, but, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Woodger. Further questions? Mr. Groff?
Probably more of a comment, but partially question. As with any development, whether it be apartments or housing developments, they have to allocate so much toward green space, and this is covering that requirement, but isn't it also really floodplain?
Part of it is floodplain, yes. But the public sites and open space legislation doesn't say that it can't be floodplain, it just has to be property that the city's willing to accept, and we were willing to accept this property for this project.
So being primarily floodplain, it, it's not good for development, but on the other hand, it's good for the area in that they do have an area that will be green space and runoff when we do get the heavy rains.
Yes, and, and we're restoring part of the floodplain so that it will lessen the flooding mainly downstream of the Shasta culvert, but, but we're readjusting the floodplain in there.
Okay, further questions? Anyone else before we head back to Mr. Woodger? Mr. Woodger?
Now, so is the Parks Department going to be required once this whole project is done to, for the upkeep of this? I guess I'm still trying to figure out why Parks Department's in on, I don't want them to gain something they can't afford.
Parks Department is in on it because it's, it's part of the public sites and open space. So they, the Parks Board has to accept it. But no, it'll, it'll go on our, like the bike path. For maintenance.
Just making sure the Parks Department's got enough things to take care of.
Okay, Mr. Woodger, thank you. Anything else? Mr. Groff, you're second on this?
Uh, Mr. Bowles? Oh, well.
And how many readings? Mr. Groff, your pleasure on readings?
Uh, three readings.
Three readings then on temporary ordinance 6-19? That's all I have. I'll toss back to Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other items for Finance? Denise looks like she has something for Finance, but she's looking at the Service Safety Director or Jerry or.
I don't know.
Look like the cat that swallowed the canary. What do we got here?
Well, I was told I was supposed to give a, a update presentation tonight, and it didn't seem to fall into Department Updates.
Okay.
So it's very short.
Let's roll.
Okay. I'm here on the Stormwater Utility. This is the 15th year of the Stormwater Utility here in Lancaster. We're what's known in the business as a mature utility because we've been around so long. The utility was approved in 2003, so that predates everybody here except Tom was running for office at the time.
I sat out there the day, the night they passed it when Carl talked about this big pile of, big pile of paper, so.
We started collecting funds in 2004. Couple, a couple meetings ago, you've heard me talk about the flood of 2004 that happened the first day of the Stormwater Utility. When the Stormwater Utility was first proposed, it was a confluence of several events. We had, the city as a whole had a lack of capital funds to make stormwater repairs, and the South Broad Street storm sewer collapsed three times. It required us to borrow $1 million to make that repair, and that was $1 million the city really didn't have. At the same time, Mike Nixon was going through the first round of long-term control plan requirements, and we had identified several projects, including the Lake Allen Project that required stormwater repairs also that the city didn't have funds for. At the same time, US EPA issued a list of MS4, which is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Communities. These were communities that they had identified to be required to get a stormwater permit from Ohio EPA. And the last thing was a lack of funds for the Street Department, who was responsible for maintaining the storm sewer. So we looked at all of those things, said we need to generate some funds, and came up with a stormwater utility. At the time, City Council put four requirements on us. They said we could start a utility and we could charge a utility fee, but we had to comply with the Ohio EPA permit requirements. We had to reduce Street Department reliance on the general fund. We had to maximize the use of the Stormwater Fund by applying for grants and leveraging that money, and we had to be housed in another department. They didn't want to create all the overhead that goes with the Stormwater Department. Our initial rate was 464. At the time we approved the utility, we guaranteed that rate for five years, and that's, that was 464 for what we call an equivalent residential unit. That's a single-family home or an equivalent of 2,600 square feet on commercial industrial and multifamily residential. In 2009, we came back, said, look, we've worked really hard, we have lots of projects out there, can we get an increase? So in, from 2009 to 2013, we stepped our rate up to $7.64. At the time, Mr. Stoughton was, was very involved in those negotiations and actually negotiated those step increases for City Council. In 2004, so from 2013, we have not had a rate increase in the Stormwater Utility. Any budget increases that we have is coming from increased impervious areas and customers coming into the system. In 2014, as part of the second phase of the long-term control plan, we looked, we seriously looked at the affordability of the projects and what that would do to our rates and how much we could afford to do, and that was all part of the negotiations we had with Ohio EPA. As part of that long-term control plan, recognizing that our rates were higher than most communities, we guaranteed that we would not increase rates until 2025 with the condition that our funds had to be directed to long-term control plan projects as a priority, so we could not take on new drainage projects. Anything that we had on the books, we would continue to work on. Any opportunities that we had for grants, we would set aside some money for, but we weren't taking on new major projects. In 2018, we updated our rate study, and it confirmed that we do not need a rate increase for the next five years. Our MS4 permit, we have what they call. In two thousand and four, so from two thousand and thirteen, we have not had a rate increase in the stormwater utility. Any budget increases that we have is coming from increased impervious areas and customers coming into the system. In two thousand and fourteen, as part of the second phase of the long-term control plan, we looked, we seriously looked at the affordability of the projects and what that would do to our rates and how much we could afford to do. And that was all part of the negotiations we had with Ohio EPA. As part of that long-term control plan, recognizing that our rates were higher than most communities, we guaranteed that we would not increase rates until two thousand and twenty-five with the condition that our funds had to be directed to long-term control plan projects as a priority. So we could not take on new drainage projects. Anything that we had on the books, we would continue to work on. Any opportunities that we had for grants, we would set aside some money for, but we weren't taking on new major projects. In two thousand and eighteen, we updated our rate study, and it confirmed that we do not need a rate increase for the next five years. Our MS4 permit, we have what they call six minimum control measures that we need to meet. The first one is public education. Kind of hand in hand with that is the second one, which is public awareness. So that's educating the public, making them aware of stormwater issues. They include things like sending out an annual brochure and keeping our webpage and things like that. We have a requirement to manage construction stormwater, which means any set, any new construction in the city, be it a residential, house, or a commercial undergoes a stormwater review by my office. And as part of that stormwater review, they have to come up with what's called a SWIP, a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. Those are also required by Ohio EPA Construction Stormwater Permit, so we have to comply, we have to make sure they're complying with that. The fourth activity is post-construction stormwater, so that's long-term management, the things like the detention retention basins. We annually inspect all of those in the city. There's about a hundred and fifty of them. And as part of our plan review, we make sure those things meet both our requirements and Ohio EPA requirements. We have a requirement for illicit discharge elimination. That includes spills, which comes into play later on. But we have to, Ohio EPA requires us to map our entire stormwater system and check outfalls at least once every five years. And we have about eight hundred outfalls in the city that we have to go out and check. Some of them get checked quarterly, some of them get checked twice a year if they're in what's called hotspots or areas that might have high industrial dischargers. And then our last one is the one everybody forgets about, and it's really the major, major work that stormwater does. It's called good housekeeping. And that means we have to effectively manage our stormwater system through maintenance. So that includes the money that we give to LDOT. It includes street sweeping and all the maintenance that they do on the stormwater system. It also includes staff training for good housekeeping. I have a direct staff of five or four plus me. I'm the stormwater management manager, and I'm responsible for admin, administration, permit compliance, education awareness, planning, and capital improvements. Stephen Walsted is the stormwater engineer, and he is responsible for all of our plan reviews. He does our, our mapping is complete, so he updates our mapping, adds new areas. He's been very busy lately doing corrections as we find things, we're always finding catch basins someplace that we never expected. He also does capital improvements. Jacob Pendleton is our stormwater specialist. He's an environmental scientist. He's responsible for education, awareness activities. He maintains our impervious areas for billing. He also coordinates with utilities collection on billing. He does our stream surveys, our outfall inventory, our mapping, our wetlands, our stream restoration, capital improvement, and our stream improvement plans. James Pate is our stormwater inspector. He does construction inspections. He does, he is out every week to every construction site in the city, including single-family homes. He does our post-construction inspections, and he does our complaint investigations. Debbie Julian is our administrative assistant. We share her with engineering. She handles the telephones, all the office stuff, does bid books and record keeping for us. With Debbie, it's, it's kind of a Peter and Paul thing. Either I pay her or general fund pays her, and what we chose to do is put her in stormwater. So I pay her, and then you reimburse me at the end of the year. So it's just a cash flow thing. With our, with our five people on staff, we also provide funding and utilize the other departments, ITT, engineering, LDOT, utilities collection, and economic development. We all provide, we provide funding for all of those departments. We also coordinate with other departments, even if we're not providing funding. With the building department, we do building plan reviews with them, so they can ensure building permit until stormwater signs off on it for the construction stormwater issues. We handle wellhead protection for the water department because enforcement for wellhead protection comes through the illicit discharge program. We do planning and capital improvements for water pollution because, as Mike always says, he never has a problem until it rains. Mike has a very similar program under his combined sewer overflow, and he has nine minimum control measures, and, and they all line up with ours. So to avoid duplication, we handle those for him. Jacob does our landfill monitoring under our Ohio EPA permit. This is something we've added in the last couple of years. It was actually cheaper for sanitation to reimburse me for Jacob's time than to go out and hire a consultant. So that's worked very well for both us and sanitation. We also support parks in the Tree Commission. We provide money for new trees within the city. We help the Tree Commission replace the green ash trees in areas, including River Valley Highlands, because trees will actually reduce the amount of stormwater by about twenty percent. So it's, it's a good thing for us. We're a very efficient program. About two percent of our funds go to administration, and that's mainly reimbursement to the general fund for things like the auditor and the treasurer and the administration, excuse me. That also includes Debbie's time. Billing is eight percent of our budget. That's the amount that we give to utilities collection to actually bring our money in. They do a very good job for us. They keep delinquencies down and handle customers and clients and, and all those new billing things, which takes a lot of time. Our permit compliance is about fifty percent of our budget, and capital improvements take the last forty percent. And keeping with council's requirement that we leverage funds, according to my books, through two thousand and eighteen, we've spent fifteen million dollars in stormwater funds on capital improvements, and we've leveraged that for forty-seven million dollars. So the, the projects were actually worth forty-seven million dollars. It cost me fifteen million. We leverage through grants such as the Ohio Public Works Commission, Community Development, FEMA, ARA, Ohio EPA, and US EPA. Whenever possible, we combine projects with wastewater, engineering, and LDOT. And as Mitch talked earlier about the Edie Road Project, we provide seed money to get other projects going. So in Mitch's case, he went through, got a cost estimate, and said the stormwater share of this project will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I give him a hundred and twenty-five thousand upfront so that he has money to do the engineering, and, and I've already paid then my, my share of the project. But it allows him to get a project going and keep a project going.
Question for Denise. It's a lot of information. Although it's a, it's fifteen years' work. Any questions? Well, we appreciate the update. I do remember fifteen years ago. I didn't realize the first day that there was a stormwater, we had a flood, but boy, that's not karma. I don't know what is. All right, well, Denise, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Can we send a copy of that out? Like you said, it's a lot of information.
A copy of...
She was bringing up something.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Yes, we will. All right, any other items for finance? See none, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You are adjourned. Mr. President, six thirty-eight.
Thank you very much. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin in the next five, ten minutes.
And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at seven four zero six five four two eight four eight for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at ten thirty-one North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over fifteen years at this location and twenty-seven years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at seven four oh six five three zero six five two. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, four oh five North Columbus Street in Lancaster or two oh seven South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day and your many blessings. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to serve. We ask that in these items that are before us, you would give us wisdom, help us to know what is best as we move forward with the business of the city, lead, guide, and direct us tonight, we pray, in Jesus's name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bous?
Here.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodger?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance tonight. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Series of emails regarding homeless camp and cleanup submitted by Code Enforcement Director Sean Fowler. Email dated March twenty-fifth, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen regarding homeless camps submitted by Sanitation Department Superintendent Bill Burrows. Email dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen regarding Temporary Resolution forty-nine nineteen submitted by Transit Manager Carrie Woody. Email dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen regarding Notice of Public Hearing Number One for the CDBG submitted by Mary Jo Smith, bear with me a second, Executive Director, Community Development Department. Email dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen regarding information submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin. Email dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen regarding Marx and recent LE articles submitted by Chief Adam Pilar. Email dated April first, two thousand and nineteen regarding the March twenty-fifth draft meeting minutes submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Series of emails regarding information for Joseph Colette submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin. Email dated April second, two thousand and nineteen regarding cancellation of IT meetings submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Series of emails regarding the public records requests submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt. Email dated April fourth, two thousand and nineteen regarding CDBG FY twenty nineteen funding application filing date submitted by Mary Jo Smith, Executive Director of the Community Development Department. Email dated April fourth, two thousand and nineteen regarding public records requests submitted by Mrs. Downhour. Email dated April fifth, two thousand and nineteen regarding IT meetings rescheduled dates submitted by Mrs. Downhour. Email dated April eighth, two thousand and nineteen regarding IT meeting location submitted by Mark Starr, Information Technology Director. And finally, an email dated April eighth, two thousand and nineteen regarding the IT meeting location submitted by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are none to be presented.
We have no special presentations or awards tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
At this time, we set a time, set aside time at each of our city council meetings for voters and taxpayers to address city council on any issue, issue or item they would like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening, we ask that you would come forward. Sign in at the podium with your name and address. State the same for the record. In accordance with the rules of council, we ask that you would limit your remarks to five minutes or less. Please note that while city council members may choose to address your question or concern at some other portion of the meeting, they will not respond to you at this particular time. With that, is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight? Thank you all for being here. Are there reports of standing committees?
I have one. The Finance Committee meeting minutes for April eighth, two thousand and nineteen submitted by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move straight to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution forty dash nineteen.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the sanitation fund six oh five and amend the certificate of appropriations with county auditor offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the temporary record, Temporary Resolution number forty nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution forty dash nineteen. Ms. Bobbitt.
As this resolution reads, it's for equipment that sanitation department is receiving free of charge from the solid waste district. I believe they're getting a tub grinder, a chipper, and a loader. And this is all for the composting purposes. The piece of legislation is to fix and get these, this equipment that's worth a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in tip-top condition.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bous?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution forty dash nineteen passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution forty-two dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Montank Drive Culvert Replacement Project offered by Mr. Woodger, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution forty-two nineteen. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution forty-two dash nineteen. Mr. Woodger.
And again, this is fairly self-explanatory. This is the Culvert Replacement Project, and we've talked about this in the Montank Road area.
Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bous?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution forty-two dash nineteen passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 44-19.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Improvement Fund 317, amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, and issue a then-and-now, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 4419.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 44-19. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are just setting up these expense and revenue accounts should we need to use them going forward for the court grant.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 44-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 45-19.
A resolution approving an application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 929.02, offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff.
Yes, I will ask a quick question first, though, since I was not here at the last meeting. Apologize for that, but we did have the public hearing in the last meeting.
Yes, we did.
Okay. In that case, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 4519.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 45-19. Mr. Groff?
I guess this has been thoroughly discussed since you had a, a public hearing.
Well, to be clear, Mr. Groff, we had a public hearing with zero proponents or opponents.
I'm not surprised.
Me neither.
And based on that, and based on this is per the Ohio Revised Code for agricultural district within the city limits, unless Law Director Elam has anything to say, I will say no further comments.
Okay, Mr. Elam, nothing? Further, yes, Mr. Woodard.
Who requested this, or how did this come about?
Mr. Elam?
It's statutory, so the request is made through the county auditor's office, and if any portion of the land, this is about approximately 600 acres, I think, that was going into this agricultural district of one owner, and a portion of that acreage was in the city limits, so it had to come before city council statutorily for review and approval.
So this is the property owner that's requested that this happened?
That is correct.
And it does not necessarily have any adverse effect on our industrial possibilities out in that area where our...
It establishes the agricultural district. It's a five-year renewable process for the owner. But if there is something that has to hap... It doesn't alleviate the opportunity for, what do I want to say, for...
Industrial growth?
Shoot. For further development? For further development or whatever, should that be necessary, we can, you know, those things can be pursued. There's an avenue for that.
Okay, that was my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 45-19 passes nine to zero. Now, I have a second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 47-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the L.D.O. Fund 208 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution 47-19. Temporary Resolution 48-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a membership agreement and bylaws to become a member of NEORIDE and Ohio Council of Governments, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Schoonover?
Second of three readings.
Excuse me. Oh, yes. You said, okay, you said Schoonover, and I thought I did something wrong.
It's Mr. Schoonover, right?
Yes, it is, Schoonover and Teener.
Second reading then, right, Mr. Schoonover?
Yes, sir.
On Temporary Resolution 48-19.
Yep.
I'm reading more into it than I needed to.
Temporary Resolution 49-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and to enter into multiple construction agreements for the improvement project known as Rock Mill Corporate Park Phase Two, Part Three, in conjunction with the development of Project GWN and Project Charge, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 4919.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 49-19. Mr. Schoonover?
As Mr. Nolan came up and filled us in a little bit, this project's moving quickly. They are going out to bid for the first part of the road expansion for turn lane, so we wanted to speed this up so they could get that out for bid.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 4919.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 49-19. Further discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
No, thank you.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 49-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 51-19.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the L.D.O. Improvement Fund 314, amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, and issue a then-and-now, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading on Resolution Temporary 5119.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading on Temporary Resolution 51-19. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. In alignment with the resolution, Mr. Schoonover just asked for passage. This is also setting the expense and revenue accounts with the auditor in our, on our books, so we need to pass this as well.
Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 5119.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 51-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Thanks.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 51-19 passes nine to zero. Now, I have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 53-19.
An ordinance of consent for preliminary legislations for the widening of Edie Road with the addition of turn lanes at County Road 33A Memorial Drive and County Road 37 North Columbus Street within the city of Lancaster, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 53-19. Temporary Resolution 54-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Stormwater Fund 606, amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 54-19. Temporary Resolution 55-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Capital Improvement Fund 320 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary 5519.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 55-19. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has been pre-approved from AEP to basically install a commercial electric vehicle charging station, which we're going to put in the city lot near Municipal Court. This is a fast-track project of about ninety days, therefore, we want to make sure that all the legislation needed is passed in a timely manner so that can happen, so I'm asking for suspension, please.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 5519.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 55-19. Mr. Stoughton?
Just quickly, it's been appropriate, or it's been allocated at $100,000. We've heard that this port charging station will be about $80,000 and so change, so it's not a cheap endeavor, but basically fully funded to the, back to the city for four years as well of expenses.
Which is good.
Just to add that on.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 55-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 56-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and or his designee to execute any and all documents necessary to facilitate development of the Magna Seeding of America project in the Rock Mill Industrial Park, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to have a pertinent that says added to this preamble, and then we'll go two readings.
Excellent. First two readings on Temporary Resolution 56-19. Temporary Resolution 57-19.
A resolution to request and accept a loan from the Lancaster Port Authority to facilitate development of the Magna Seeding of America project in the Rock Mill Industrial Park in furtherance of economic development, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary 5719.
Second.
In alignment with the two pieces that we passed earlier, we are fast-tracking projects in the industrial park. This will be... We will be taking a loan from the Port Authority that the city will pay back once we are made whole... Or actually, some purchases are completed in the industrial park, which will pay back to Port Authority, but this is kind of a stopgap in between those events happening so we can get these projects rolling, so we expect to put that money or give that money back to the Port Authority very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 5719.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 57-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 57-19 passes nine to zero. Are there further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council tonight? If not, we'll move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the first reading of Temporary Ordinance 6-19.
An ordinance to authorize the Service Safety Director to accept approximately 10 acres, more or less, of property situated in Township 14, Range 19, Section 2 and 3, city of Lancaster, Fairfield County, from Fairfield Homes, Inc., offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Bowles.
Mr. Groff?
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 6-19. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we have no tabled legislation. We'll move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have unfinished business this evening? Mr. Groff?
Yes, I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. I thought I'd play a little show and tell tonight. I've discussed it in the past and with the Parks Department, with members of the Tree Commission. I've mentioned it to a few people here, but I just wanted to bring it up tonight because it kind of got me... This is about two seconds of picking up. They stick together like those little plastic toys that kids have, and it kind of ties in with some of the things that Mr. Cruz had to say tonight, in the fact that when it comes to street trees in the city right-ofways, between the sidewalk and the street, there is an approved list by the Parks Department and by the Tree Commission. Many trees are not planted by the city. They're planted by homeowners. And a lot of these trees, some like this sweet gum, you know, not only destroys the yards, there were thousands of them from one tree. They wash into our sewers, they destroy our infrastructure, they grow everywhere, and, you know, they are an absolute nuisance. I've mentioned it to the Tree Commission on the basis that some of these trees get planted. They're aware of them, but they are so interested in a canopy that they don't go just pull them out. You know, it's going to create problems down the road. Why wait until it costs you $1,000 or far more to be able to take a tree out because you want a canopy versus pulling it out and putting a proper tree from the approved list in that spot which the city will plant? It saves a lot of problems in our sewers, it saves a lot of problems along our streets. They are not littered with stuff like this. I believe in a canopy, too. I love trees, but it needs to be a planned and managed canopy, and I would just like to see that message go a little stronger through our city to alleviate some of these problems down the road. I've also had complaints from homeowners on some of these trees, but it's cost the homeowner, not on the sweet gum, but on some of these other trees that are getting overgrown in an area, and it's cost that homeowner alone over $1,000 just because of wiring problems. I've had many complaints from others on their sewer lines to the sewers that are causing problems. So, we need to pay attention to our infrastructure, but yet have a planned and managed canopy, which may take some time.
Thank you, Mr. Groff, and let me just say I'm so pleased that your little baggie there is filled with something other than what I thought it was filled with when you began and held it up there, so...
No, no. This one, I won't say it's clean, but it's not.
He said, "I started picking, and I was like, 'Oh, my word, what are we doing?'" But thank you very much. Okay. You said you had other things without objection. Go ahead.
Yes, I had one other thing, which I typically try not to do because it causes my hair to fall out, and that's look at some of the community sites on social media, and one of the things I wanted to mention that I saw on there today, somebody said, "Where can I get rid of two-by-fours with nails in them and old carpet?" But I want to get rid of it for free. I just wanted to reiterate the old saying, "There's no free lunch." You know, construction materials, come to find out further in the comments, that they torn out a wall. It's more than a handful of two-by-fours probably. It's tearing up carpet. Since they said drywall screws in them also, I presume there's some drywall there. The suggestions that I saw on there, I was a little displeased with. People were commenting about, "Just throw it out in the alley behind your house. Usually, somebody picks it up." Again, there's no free lunch. If our sanitation department picks it up, that stuff has to go to a landfill. It has to go to a proper landfill. That costs the city money. City doesn't have money. The people do. It's your tax dollars that's paying for that to get cleaned up, aside from the fact that it makes our city look trashy when it lays there for months or weeks or whatever. So, I would just like to, you know, make people aware that you just don't throw trash out in the alleys or along the streets.